And we will call the meeting to order. And I'd ask Kelly if you'd call or make a roll call, please.
Absolutely. Commissioner Bracken?
Here.
Commissioner Galka is excused. Commissioner Port?
Here.
Commissioner Prenovo?
Here.
Commissioner McLean? Commissioner McLean is signed in. He's just muted. There we go. Commissioner McLean? We will count him as here as we do see him in the room. Vice Chair Robertson?
Here.
And Chairman Salvage?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. And first on our agenda tonight, we have two sets of minutes that we need to address. First, I assume everybody's had the opportunity to review those minutes. The first one is the minutes from the April 30th meeting. Is there any amendments, changes, concerns? What did you see? Hearing none, then those minutes will stand approved as presented. Our second set of minutes is from the June 17th meeting. Any changes, additions, or corrections? Again, hearing none, those meetings or those minutes will stand approved as presented. So we'll jump right into our hearings. Our first hearing tonight is a continuation of the public hearing. It's AR-2005 for the farmworker housing project. This application has been continued from the June 24th Planning Commission meeting. The record was left open until July 2nd at 5:00 PM for the public to provide further testimony. The record was then left open until July 9th at 5:00 PM for the applicant to provide rebuttal. The city received comment from the public and the applicant which have been posted to the city's website and Facebook page and provided to the planning commission. Based on the comments provided by the applicant, there is a request to continue to reopen the public record for further comment and continue the hearing. To discuss the specific request, I'm going to turn it over to Trey initially, and then we'll ask for the applicant or the applicant's representative to weigh in.
Thank you. And commission, so we did get a letter from Miss Ragar, right? I believe it's Miss Ragar on behalf of the applicant. I think you were provided a copy of that letter. I have no problem with the request made by the applicant in order to reopen their record and create more of a record as they've requested on the public hearing procedures and the right for written closings. To me, it's not a, it doesn't mean that I necessarily agree with everything, but they're the applicant. If they want to reopen and make sure that they have the record that they want, and we're giving everybody an opportunity to testify or say what they need to say. I absolutely have no problem with that. And I believe that the attorney for the farmworkers may have some comments as well if she'd like. Otherwise, I do believe that the commission should grant the request.
Thank you, Trey. Can you briefly summarize the process upcoming?
You mean the process if the commission reopens and adopts the motion that's requested by the applicant?
Yes.
Yeah, let me pull it up. So the applicant, we reopen the hearing this evening for the evidence. The record would remain open July 15th through July 22nd at 5:00 PM for any party to submit any party to submit written evidence or testimony regarding the file. From July 23rd to July 29th at 5:00 PM, any party may submit written testimony and rebuttal to anything that was previously submitted in the previous week during that seven day period. And then finally, the applicant would have a chance to submit final written arguments between July 29th and August 5th, which satisfies, I think, the overall goal, which is, you know, the applicant has the burden of proof. The applicant also gets the final say. And I believe that summarizes the request. I believe the motion, proposed motion that was provided by Kelly also has that procedure in there.
Yes. Okay, Ms. Ragar, is there anything you'd like to add?
Commissioners, just appreciate the opportunity to make this procedural request and your contemplation of it. Just coming into the representation of fair housing development, sorry, farmworkers, housing development corporation is and dealing with electronic meetings probably for the first time for all of us during this public health emergency. But it was really important to make sure that the process is followed and that in addition to the timeline set forth that on the record tonight, that the raise it or waive it standards are mentioned so that all members of the public viewing this electronic meeting will be aware of that standard in this quasi judicial hearing. And I'm available if you have any other questions. Thank you for the opportunity.
Any of the planning commissioners have any questions about the process? Okay. Who would like to read the motion? In fact, I guess the question before us is, are we willing to extend or continue the hearing under legal counsel? We are advised to. That doesn't mean you have to, but it's advised to. So is anybody prepared to make a motion? Okay, I have it right here in front of me. So I'll go ahead and make the motion if somebody wants to second when we get done. The planning commission moves to reopen the public record for file AR-2005 based on the letter submitted by applicants counsel on July 14th, 2020, raising concerns about procedural irregularities on the following terms. The planning commission reopens the public hearing to read the quasi judicial land use procedure rules into the record. Two, the planning commission further reopens the public record as follows. The record shall be opened from July 15th through July 22nd, 2020 at 5:00 PM for any party to submit any written evidence or testimony pertaining to file AR-2005. Thereafter, from July 23rd to July 29th, 2020, at 5:00 PM, any party may submit written testimony in rebuttal to those submittals in the first seven day period. In other words, responsive testimony to those submittals received between July 15th and July 22nd, 2020 at 5:00 PM. Finally, the applicant may submit final written arguments between July 29th and August 5th, 2020 at 5:00 PM. The planning commission will reconvene during the regularly scheduled meeting on August 19th, 2020 to deliberate and make a final decision. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Any discussion? Does everybody understand what we have on the table?
Yes.
Okay. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. And Trey, I'll send it back to you.
All right. So to read into the record, there's some of the procedures that I normally would read are not applicable on the Zoom meeting. But that's more about the procedural parts. I do want to inform everybody that's either watching now or use this that all interested parties may provide written testimony concerning the issues relevant to the hearing. All testimony or evidence must be directed towards the criteria described in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations. I point out that the relative relevant criteria are provided in the staff report and the staff report is available online or by request. Note that failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, if any, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the planning commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the land use board of appeals on those issues. Does anybody have any questions on that? I'll also note that we will, at the time that we take this case up again for deliberation, we'll ask the commissioners if they'd had any ex parte contact regarding the file or had any conflict of interest arising since this file started.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Ms. Ragar, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Thank you very much for your time and we'll see you again next month.
Okay, thank you very much. Then with that, the hearing is continued until our meeting. What was it? August 19th?
And for application for the public, we will post those dates and timelines on our city's websites along with all the application materials that have already been posted.
Okay, with that, then we'll move on to our public hearing for this evening. Get it up here. Letting file AR-2009, it's an administrative review. As the, well, before I do that, let me read the procedures for tonight. I almost skipped that. Because it's a virtual meeting, we got to do things a little bit differently as Trey alleviated to her a little bit ago. So let me read the process. In response to the coronavirus pandemic, the protection of the public's health and the health of the staff and commissioners, the city has initiated the process of conducting virtual public meetings. And this is the summation of those meetings. Tonight, we will hear the staff report, the applicant's presentation, and the planning commission will be able to ask questions of the staff and the applicant. Once this process is complete, the public record will be kept open and the public hearing will be continued to a date certain of Wednesday, July 22nd, 2020 at 6:00 PM. During the time period between this meeting and the 5:00 PM on Monday, July 20th, 2020, the city will be accepting both written and verbal comment on the public hearing items. Verbal comment, a phone number has been provided in the public notice and can be viewed on the screen. After the deadline, city staff will compile all the received public comments and deliver to the planning commission applicants and make available on the city's website, if possible, all the received public comments. The public hearing will continue on July 22nd at 6:00 PM. For this portion of the public hearing, staff will summarize the public comments received. The applicant will be able to respond to the comments and the planning commission will ask any questions. Upon conclusion of the comments and questions to the applicant, the public hearing will be closed and the planning commission will deliberate in either rendering a decision or proffering the hearing to a date certain for further evaluation. This process, although different process, although different than a traditional planning commission meeting, will still provide the public with an opportunity to participate and engage in the public hearing process. Are there any questions? Okay, with that, then we'll move on to, as I said, planning file AR-2009 and ask the planning commission if there's any ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias. Hearing none, then we'll turn it over to staff for the staff report.
If I could start out, I want to go ahead and for the record, read in the, what everybody just heard anyways. But for purposes of the record, all interested parties may provide written testimony pursuant to the procedure set out previously concerning issues relevant to the hearing. All testimony or evidence must be directed towards the criteria described in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations. Failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, if any, accompanied by statement or evidence sufficient to afford the planning commission and the parties an opportunity for parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal, any appeal to the land use board of appeals. I also want to note on this file that our office and me in particular represented the seller of the property. I don't see that as a conflict, but I wanted to let everybody know that I did represent the seller, I represent the seller of the property on which this property, this proposed development is scheduled.
Thank you, Trey. Now, staff.
Gotcha. Okay, so good evening. Before you tonight is an application for an administrative review for a development of a 78 unit apartment complex on the south side of the intersection of Russell Drive and Franklin Streets. The subject parcel is 7.42 acres and is zoned residential mixed density. They're adding the property to the north. Our vacant property is zoned or designated as residential mixed density within the zoning or the comprehensive plan. And also at the June planning commission meeting, an application for a 48 unit apartment complex at the northwest corner of Russell Drive and Franklin Street was also approved. To the south are vacant properties that are currently zoned industrial. And to the west is the developed first phase of McKinney Lane apartment complexes as well as the single family homes located within the county incorporated area. Finally, to the east are single family homes in the county unincorporated area with a designation of residential load density. For the proposed development area, the subject property is 7.42 acres. But the total development area is only 4.02 acres and you can see on the screen in blue is where the development area is proposed versus where the total site area is in orange and blue combined. The site does contain identified wetlands which have been delineated and concurred with DSL. And the development proposal would be located between Russell Drive to the north and the delineated wetland area to the south. And you can see the boundary line in that blue area where the wetlands would begin as well. The remainder of the approximate 3.4 acres of the property would continue to be undeveloped. For the development proposal, the applicant is proposing again to develop a 78 unit apartment complex as indicated on the site plan provided on the screen. This would be a total of six two-story apartment buildings as well as a clubhouse and pool area. In terms of setbacks, per the development code, the minimum observed setbacks include a 10-foot front setback, five-foot side setbacks, and a 20-foot rear setback. As indicated on the site plan, the front setback, which is Russell Drive, would be over 12 feet in size. Side setbacks would be over 13 feet on the western property line and 12 on the eastern property line. And the rear setback would far exceed the 20 feet as the rear part of the development does back up to the wetlands and the property that's not proposed to be developed. For density, with the removal of the wetland area and portions of the property not included in the development, the total project area is 4.02 acres. And as demonstrated in the agenda report with calculating the required land area based off of the unit type, whether it's studio, one, or two, or three bedroom type, the required land area for the development would be 2.48 acres and therefore the project is within the allowable density standards. For open space, the development code requires 25% of the development area to be designated for open space and landscaping. Of this requirement, at least 50% of that would have to be, would have to be usable open space. So it shouldn't be designated for storm drainage areas or unable to walk on. And finally, the, at least 25% of the usable open space should be located in one area. In addition, a children's play area would be required and the remainder open space would be able to be distributed throughout the site. As proposed, the applicant is providing 29% of the overall development area as landscaping. 41% of the landscaping would be designated as usable. And credits is authorized in the development code at a ratio of one square feet of enhanced amenity area such as a clubhouse or a pool area equates to a total of four square feet of the required usable open space. And so with the applied credits, the project exceeds the 50% of the landscape area to be usable. Over 25% of the usable area is located within the northwest portion of the property where the clubhouse is located in the pool. And the required children's play area would be located adjacent to the central building three on the site plan. And so with all of that information, the project meets the open space requirements. For parking, the development code requires 2.25 vehicle parking spaces per unit and 0.5 bicycle parking spaces per unit. But there's an authorized earned parking reduction which allows for up to 15% reduction of the overall vehicle parking requirement with the additional covered and uncovered bicycles parking spaces being provided. The applicant is only proposing a 10% reduction for the earned parking reduction. With the code authorized reduction, the minimum required vehicle parking would be 158 parking spaces. And the minimum required bicycle parking would be 112 spaces, 92 of which would be covered and 20 would be uncovered. And based off of the provided site plan, the applicant meets those required requirements. Finally, regarding traffic considerations, traffic impact analysis was prepared as part of the planning process and included in the agenda packet for review. The results of the traffic impact analysis determined that the increased traffic associated with the development can be accommodated within the existing traffic system. And no additional off-site improvements would be required. And it is important to note that the TIA also took into consideration the proposed development of the recently approved 48 units complex to the northwest of the sites. And for some final points of clarification and modification, there are two minor modifications suggested to be findings and conditions in the agenda reports. For finding number two, it does indicate on the last sentence that improvements to Russell Drive would include a curb, gutter, and sidewalk. However, upon further evaluation, the engineering department did identify that the existing improvements, which include a multi-use path, were sufficient improvements to the public right of way. And as such, staff is recommending that the finding number two be modified to just simply remove the last sentence of that current finding. And in addition, under the engineering condition, letter B for the sewer system conditions, it would be removed from the conditions for this project as that's condition is actually not applicable to this development. So with that, I'll conclude my staff reports. The recommended motion tonight would be to continue the public hearing to the date certain of July 22nd and to leave the public record open for comment by any member of the public until Monday, July 20th at 5:00 PM to provide written or verbal comments. And also to request staff to modify finding number two to remove the last sentence and to remove engineering condition letter B in the sewer section. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions for Kelly?
I got one that might be pertinent. So in the development code, we talk a little bit about signage. And I understand that, you know, that's mostly for, you know, urban or streets, things like that. But is that piece of the land that's not being developed, is that still protected wetland? And if it is, are we going to require this complex to put some signs up to keep people out of that side that still has the wetland in it?
So the wetland area to the south is designated as and delineated as a wetland. So it wouldn't be able to be developed on to mitigate that wetland if they reduce, do so. We don't have it conditioned to say that they can't be in the wetland area or to require signage. But if the planning commission wanted to, they could add that condition.
Okay, so it's not really a big deal to me. I was just wondering, like, you know, there were some studios, one and two bedrooms. And I'm thinking, okay, can we have some signage out there to keep maybe kids or whomever out there, you know, just away from that area? That's what I was thinking. But I thought that the signage was really more pertaining to urban, you know, real city life, but this is next to a wetland. I thought we could have some signage out there, but instead of bringing it up.
The applicant can take that as a consideration or the planning commission can make it a requirement that the wetlands be not walked on.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, seeing them, then we will invite the applicant to step up and identify yourself and give your presentation.
Hi, everyone. I'm Aaron Wagon from Marathon Development. I don't have a presentation, so to speak, because Kelly, we understood that Kelly would cover everything once we saw her staff report. This is the second phase of our McKinney Lane Apartments development. Our first phase has been quite successful. It's been there, let's see, about seven, eight years now. So we thought it was ripe to bring in a second phase. We're excited to add amenities to the development because the first phase doesn't have a clubhouse and a pool. So we're looking forward to adding those amenities and having those shared amenities between the two phases. But the first development's been successful. I think for those of you that know the first phase, we build high quality buildings. We take pride that we at least believe and we're somewhat biased that we have the nicest units within Lebanon. But long story short, we're excited to build a second phase and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, there's kind of a question on the table. Do you want to comment on the wetlands?
Yeah, I mean, we're happy to provide signage. You know, Brian, you might know those, the wetlands a little better than I do because I've, you know, I've walked around back there, but they're pretty wet. They're real, they're significant and real wetlands. So I don't, you know, I don't see people you know, going for a swim anytime soon. But we're happy to provide signage to ensure people don't disturb the wetlands. We look at them as an amenity to the project because all those, all those buildings that are border the wetlands are going to have, you know, peaceful, nice views. So, but no, we're happy to explore signage to make sure that people aren't affecting the wetlands. We have some wetlands along our first phase and we haven't, we haven't had that problem as far as we know, but we're happy to explore that option.
On my end, I wouldn't require it or even ask it. But I just thought, hey, we want to know if there were going to be signs out there. But if the first development didn't have any problems and it's really wet out there, I think we're probably fine.
Yeah, with that caveat, I mean, this is a much more significant wetland than the first development has, but you know, they're not, it's not passable. So it's not as if somebody can kind of make their way around to the backside. It's a significant wetland that I don't see people you know, messing with too much. But, but we're happy. And if that's something the commission would be interested in, we're happy to do it.
I have a question. Is there a rule against walking on wetlands? I wasn't aware of it. So what?
Brian, you're, you might be the wetland expert on the, on the call, but not that, not that I know of, but they, you know, you try and protect them as much as you can. But if somebody wanted to go for a swim, I'm not sure that we could prevent them anyway.
So good evening. My name's Brian Vendetta. I'm assisting with Marathon Development. I do business at 63 East Ash Street in Lebanon. So I'm not a wetland consultant, but I've been involved with many permits. I've read up on the rules. So the state and the core regulate fill and they regulate excavation within the wetlands. Walking within a wetland is not a violation that I'm aware of. And frankly, I think it would be nice to leave it open so people could wander in there from time to time because it is an amenity to the development. So in the dry season, it would afford some nice open space. Wouldn't violate any known state or federal regulations to do so.
And I'll add that people don't tend to listen to signage anyway. So if they want to go for a stroll, they're going for a stroll. And we would have a difficult time enforcing it if, even if we had such.
Right, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing them, then we will close this portion of the testimony. Kelly, in the process going forward, assuming that we continue the hearing, do we want to do the 777 or are we just good with the two sevens?
So the, Trey, you might want to help me out here, but the public notice identified the the two dates in which the hearing would occur. It identified how the public would be able to participate and provide written testimony. And so I may be stepping on my foot here a little bit, but I think right now we would maintain the same process. And then if it were requested between then, then we would initiate that at the next meeting unless Trey has a different understanding.
No, I mean, I think, I think we do have to have the
No, I mean, I think I think we do have to have the seven, seven, seven as an option. The last seven can certainly be waived by the applicant.
But we would initiate that after next meeting?
Well, no, I think I guess I didn't look at the procedures for this one. We have seven days of comment. We have seven days of rebuttal. And then pursuant to the procedures, the applicant has to have the opportunity for the last say. But that and that's the last three, that's the last seven days. But that is regularly and commonly, if there's no opposition waived by the applicant. But they do have to have that opportunity.
Your recommendation is to do the seven, seven, seven right up front.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Kelly, I thought we talked about that earlier, but I probably didn't identify that as well as I should have.
So we would be postponing this hearing to the August nineteenth meeting?
Right, but yes.
Okay.
So that gives us time, right? That gives us the three sevens.
Yeah, so we're going to adjust the motion on the fly here. The revised motion would be to continue the public hearing to August nineteenth. And the record will be left open for public comments to be provided until Wednesday, July twenty-second at five P M. And then if further comments or rebuttal to those comments would be accepted July twenty-ninth. And then the applicant would have the ability to rebut any of those comments in writing until August fifth at five P M, unless they choose to wait for their rebuttal. But at any point in time, in any which planning committee would finish their deliberations and vote on the applicant. Record.
Yes, for the part I heard. I don't know if you were breaking up for everybody else or not.
He wasn't a bit.
But but everything I heard was right.
Let me try this again. So we're continuing the hearing to a date certain of August nineteenth at six P M. The record will be left open for the public to provide comments until July twenty-second at five P M. Can everybody hear that so far? Then the record will be left open for any member of the public to respond to those comments and rebut those comments until July twenty-ninth at five P M. And then finally, the applicant will be able to rebut to any of those comments until five until August fifth at five P M. Everybody hear that one?
Yeah.
Okay. And the record for public comments will be closed as of July twenty-ninth at five P M.
Okay. Does anybody go?
I think that's the best. I think that's the best we can do. I think that's the best we can do under these procedures.
Okay.
Anybody prepared to make that a motion? I don't expect you to repeat all of it, but maybe just a slow move.
As a as the language of the motion as identified.
I'd like to make a motion to say that again, Kelly.
Continue the public hearing.
Continue the public hearing.
Until I until August nineteenth.
Till August nineteenth.
And leave the public record open for comment until July twenty-second at five P M.
Leave that record open for the public comment until July twenty-second at six P M.
Five P M.
Five P M, excuse me.
Rebuttal to the comment accepted.
Rebuttal to the comment accepted.
Will be accepted until July twenty-ninth at five P M.
Will be accepted till five P M, July twenty-ninth.
At that point, the public record will be closed for further comment from the public.
At which time the public record will be closed for public comment, at which time.
At which time the record will be closed for any further public comment.
Yes. What you said.
That one. And the applicant will have the ability to respond and rebut to those comments until five P M on August fifth.
Good job.
All right, is there a second?
I got this one second.
Thank you, Samuel.
Easy job. All right, is there any questions, further discussion before we vote on the motion? Hearing done, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Say nay. Hearing none, then the motion passes unanimously.
For the members of the public that are listening, we will make sure to put those dates and times and procedures up on the city's website for your review.
Thank you. So and I apologize those that are you that are listening. This is getting complicated. But we'll get through it. Hopefully, the the outcome will be as if we were looking each other in the eye, and we kind of guess like, I guess we are sort of. Okay, that concludes our public hearings for this evening. We have one more item on the agenda. It is a discussion item. Those of you that are with us are more than welcome to stay with us. There won't be any voting or well, I shouldn't say won't be any voting. There will be just primarily discussion and a recommendation at the end. So with that, then we'll move on to the Mill Race Urban Renewal District Draft Plan and Report. And Kelly, I'll toss it back to you.
Thank you, sir. So I won't steal our wonderful consultant's thunder and describe too much here, but basically what we are doing is a shuffling of land from one existing urban renewal district to a new urban renewal districts. The city has a cap on land area that can be within urban renewal districts, and this doesn't affect that cap. It doesn't have a cap on how many urban renewal districts we can have, so we are creating a new one. But we're not changing any of the land area realistically, and we're doing this to make sure that the city can honor an existing economic development agreement for the Mill Race projects. And so it's really an accounting purpose. And so with that, unless Ron wants to add anything as an introduction, we can turn it over to Elaine.
Okay, can you see the slideshow?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Kelly's muted, so I couldn't. I see you're nodding. All right, I'm Elaine Howard. I have been a consultant to the city and your urban renewal agency since about two thousand and seven. So I have been working with the city on the preparation of the Mill Race Urban Renewal Plan. What we are going to cover tonight is just a little bit of background, a review of the Mill Race Urban Renewal Plan and its conformance to the Lebanon Comprehensive Plan. Ask if you have any questions and then to ask you if you are comfortable making a motion that finds that the urban renewal plan is in conformance to your comprehensive plan. The proposed boundary of the urban renewal area is fifty-one point four or five acres. It does require the concurrent removal of property from the Northwest Lebanon Urban Renewal District because you may not have any property in two urban renewal areas at the same time. That removal would happen at the time that the city council actually holds a hearing on the ordinance to potentially adopt the urban renewal area. This property is one development property that I'm sure you looked at when it was going through development approvals. You probably, as the planning commission did, look at the development proposal for the property. The role of the planning commission is not prescribed in Oregon statute. Oregon statute or is four, five, seven covers what has to happen in the adoption of a new urban renewal plan. The statute says that the plan has to be presented to the planning commission for their recommendation, but it doesn't say recommendation on what. The statute, however, also says that the plan has to conform to your comprehensive plan. Over the years, we have tied those two together because the planning commission really is the body that makes changes to and implements your comprehensive plan. So that is your role tonight is that review of the plan to your comprehensive plan. The Mill Race Urban Renewal Plan was specifically designed to meet the requirements of an economic development agreement that has been signed for the development of that property. The timeframe of that urban renewal area is relatively short, given what typical urban renewal areas are. This timeframe is only to fiscal year in twenty twenty-eight, so an additional eight years from this year, twenty twenty. The maximum indebtedness and maximum indebtedness is the total amount of the money that the Urban Renewal Agency may spend on projects and administration for the urban renewal area. The maximum indebtedness of this plan is nine million, six hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars. It's tied to the economic development agreement also. So just to make sure that the city is covered with the agreement that they have and that this urban renewal area has the capacity to cover that agreement. There are only two projects within this urban renewal plan. One is to provide those developer incentives. Those developer incentives are basically tax rebates to the developer for a portion of the amount of property taxes the developer pays. So those incentives are not paid upfront to the developer. They're paid as the development happens and property taxes are paid. So if there isn't a financial burden to the city or to the Urban Renewal Agency if no development or full amount of development doesn't occur on the property. It's contingent on that development happening and those property taxes being paid. In this urban renewal area, there is no impact to property taxpayers in the city of Lebanon. The impacts are on the other taxing districts. So the way urban renewal works is at the time that an urban renewal area is established, the assessor establishes what's called a frozen base assessed value of that area. And the taxes off of that frozen base value go to all the taxing jurisdictions. As development occurs and property taxes come in off of that new development, that amount of property taxes goes to the Urban Renewal Agency. So property taxpayers don't pay more because of urban renewal. It's just that the taxing jurisdictions will get less money because that money is going to the Urban Renewal Agency instead of to the taxing jurisdiction. The actual impacts to the mill of the mill race to the taxing districts is anticipated to be less than the full amount of the maximum indebtedness because in working with staff and evaluating the actual development timeline, we do not anticipate that the full amount of development will occur. However, the maximum indebtedness needs to allow for that in case it does occur. But we anticipate that the actual impacts will be much less than the full amount of the maximum indebtedness. On some of your prior urban renewal areas, there have been impacts on bonds and local option levies. But since two thousand and nine, any new urban renewal area does not have an impact on other existing bonds or local option levies. So this would be an impact only on property tax revenues that might otherwise have gone to the taxing districts. In the urban renewal plan that was transmitted to you, there are findings for the conformance to the comprehensive plan. The way we do this is look at what the projects of the plan are and look at the different components of your comprehensive plan and state how this development, encouraging this development will conform to your comprehensive plan. Typically, when I'm giving a presentation, I'll give the main categories. Some planning commissions like me to go through each finding individually, and I can certainly do that for you if you want. Some do not want me to because they've gotten the packet ahead of time and they feel like it's repetitive. So I'll just mention the titles of the areas, and then I'll pause for a minute and let the chair tell me whether you want me to go through specifically each one of those findings or not. The major categories are inland use, population and economy, housing, community-friendly development, transportation, and public facilities and services. And then, Mr. Chair, would you like me to go further into those?
I will toss that to the planning commission. I personally don't need to, but if there's anybody on the planning commission that would like to dive into that, please say so.
I don't think we need to either.
Okay, you're good to go.
Okay. The process for the adoption of this new urban renewal area, the agency reviewed the proposed plan and report on June tenth. The different taxing jurisdictions were sent letters immediately thereafter, starting on June eleventh. The planning commission meeting is tonight. There'll be a county briefing next week. The county doesn't get a vote on the plan, but they are required by statute to be given a briefing on the plan. Citywide notification of the August meeting will go out in the August utility bills. And then there will be a city council hearing on August twelfth. And I'm anticipating that hearing also is going to be a virtual hearing unless otherwise noticed. And then the concurrent removal of that property from the Northwest Lebanon area would also happen at that August meeting and be contingent upon the thirty-day time period for a non-emergency ordinance, which the adoption of this plan has to be done by non-emergency ordinance. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Elaine? Okay.
I always put up a suggested motion because I I know it's hard when you only hear an urban renewal plan presentation every once in a while to know what it is you're really supposed to be finding or doing. So the first language is a suggested motion. If you concur that the urban renewal plan conforms to the comprehensive plan. Some planning commissions like to add further language that actually recommends that the city council adopt the plan. Some planning commissions don't like to add that language for the purposes of our process and what we have to do. We don't have to have that additional language, but we do need to have the language in the first paragraph.
Oh, there's a real easy one if you want to tackle it.
I move that the Lebanon Planning Commission finds, based on the information provided in the staff report and the provided attachments that the Mill Race Urban Renewal Plan confirms with the Lebanon Comprehensive Plan.
There's a second. A second. Okay. It's been motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor to recommend this to the city council, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you very much, and I will stop sharing the screen so you can get back to your business.
All right, the only thing we have left is commission business and call. All right, the only thing we have left is commission business and comments. Kelly, you sent out an email just before the meeting. Do you want to jump into that or have you got something else in mind?
Sure, um, so. Quick update, we don't have a meeting next week, so have fun. For these meetings, I think we can all agree that they're a bit cumbersome and obnoxious. But we still have to find a way to make it work. We are in a situation where there are increasing cases in the of COVID nineteen in the state and the governor is. Definitely making some moves to crack down on things here or there and so. I understand that there's a desire to meet in person and it will have to talk about that and get some input from. Some of the other people that are in the meeting as well. But I did send at least to Dawn and Jeremy to look at a couple of options of how we can run meetings differently. I I think what we just experienced tonight is one option, which would be to continue to have it as. No live public comments during the meetings. And then just go back to holding it one meeting per month. And at each meeting, we would have some meetings, it'll be a continuation of the hearing where you'll actually make a decision and then some part of the meeting would be. A discussion of new applications and starting their next phases. There's plus and minuses to this, obviously, the applicants would be delayed a month, so we need to be cognizant of the hundred and twenty day rule, but. We've been very good with that in the planning pre phases to where that's not really a big concern. But it does create a month delay for the applicants that will just need to make sure that they're notified of that. And that does create a month delay for some of the applications which you would, I guess, identify as like slam dunks. As we had in some of the previous ones where it was just the annexation or something like that. The other option would be to try to allow for the public to speak during these live Zoom meetings. Where we would put in the notification that if they wish to speak on the matter. That they would need to provide us notification before five P M. The day of the meeting so that we can provide them the login information. But then also accept written comments at that point in time as well. That would give the ability for the public to comment during the meetings, which my I T guys might hate us for, but they'll get over it. And we'll we'll work through it on that. And then if we get a contentious hearing. You're still afforded the ability to do the what we're now dubbing the seven, seven, seven rule. Which we just experienced and that would postpone some hearings to the next month. Whereas if it's not really a contentious hearing, then you might be able to get it done in just that one day. But that in itself would also add some complications with making sure that we can manage the public comment and people are commenting on the right applications, which we'll have to work that out with our. I T guys. And then the third option would be trying to find a place to conduct the meeting in public while still maintaining social distancing. And then what that would look like. We've done meetings at the Sanium Travel Station where we've held them in public and I think a total of six members of the public would be able to sit in there. While maintaining social distancing. And so for these types of applications, that's probably not sufficient and so we'd have to find an alternative location. Of how to make that happen and then again also work through the health. Concerns of that as well as the I T concerns of that, so. Kind of wanted to get your guys' feedback and thoughts on that and we'll continue to work through it. At this point in time, the city council is one hundred percent virtual. I think they're doing a hybrid where the counselors might be able to show up in one location. But members of the public would not be at that same location and so. I think we're kind of in a position where we have to take the lead from council as well, but Ron might be able to add some color to that if he would like. Now.
Kelly and I talked a little bit earlier. By far and away, my preference is to be in person. But that may not be possible. If Ron, maybe you could put your city manager's hat on. It would probably be expensive to find a venue that's large enough to accommodate, especially. Like our first hearing we had tonight, it's got a lot of input. Take a fairly large venue and then even then somebody may not be able to get in. So that although that being my my preference, it may not be realistic. Todd.
Have we thought about since the weather's nice and we thought about how finding a venue within the city that is outdoors?
That is an option that again, we would have to have some serious discussions with our I T department and what that would look like. We still need to record the meeting. And so we would need to figure out what that would look like and I'm not sure what the options for that would be right now.
Well, the I T at my work is pretty bad to regulate it.
Well, now you've just thrown down the gauntlet.
Well, I'm part of this, guys, we gotta we gotta kind of follow the city council's lead. Until until the council can actually meet in person, it'd be awkward, I think, for our planning commission to meet in person. We've we've gotten. All of our other advisory committees aren't even meeting at all. And like you said, Donna, it'd be really difficult to find a location. I mean, we did Boulder Falls here a while back for. The city manager meet and greet, if you want to call it. And that was that was, I think it was either three or five hundred dollars just to do that. So that's what you'd be looking at and that didn't include anything, so and then it also requires. Our I T team to set up on that. Venue, so so that's a tough one. I've I've thought about our community room, but I don't know that that's even. I don't know that that would that would accommodate it either. I I'm. Concerned likely that based on what we're seeing in here and that we're likely going to go back to phase one if we're if if things don't turn around. Which makes that even tougher to do, so. My preference would definitely be meet in person and and be able to have applicants talk. I think we could let it let us look internally and see if there's a way that we can have people call into the meeting. So at least they have the option to. You know, voice their concern at the meeting and see a face with who they're with who they're at. I think that's probably our biggest concern, right? I mean, other than the pain in the rear that this is. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, to me, the challenge is when you're reading testimony from a paper. You can misinterpret it several different ways. And the letter that we got in this last kind of referred to that, so that's the hard part.
Okay. Well, let let me talk to our I T folks, Kelly and I can talk to them and see if there's a way that we can. We can give out a Zoom link, it just becomes managing that and. You know, our I T guys have to be on the spot in case somebody decided to say something that we, you know. I mean, there's there's always that 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 always happened, I guess that could happen at a planning commission meeting too, but people are. Probably less likely to do it there than they would be on a Zoom meeting. But I think we have, we have some tools that we can use there and try and get it to where they can at least comment at that point. And then, you know, we're going to be the first to, I mean, our council is already asking to meet in person. In fact, our meeting this this last time was supposed to be in person, but then restrictions kept getting tighter and tighter and tighter and. They just opted to go back to Zoom meeting and they are a hassle. Trust me, we do enough of them every day that it's a hassle.
Any other thoughts? For planning commissioners, would you prefer to do some type of a hybrid? That would allow the public to comment in the Zoom meeting or are you happy doing what we're doing?
Officially be able to have the public, you know, real time questions, but I'm not sure it'd speed up the the process. Because there might be some people still wanting to write written comments, so we still have to wait that seven days, correct?
I believe you only have to wait the seven days if it's requested.
What one other option that we might have is to if the if the planning commission wanted to get together without any public. I mean, we could put the planning commission in the travel station. Is we'd have to limit the amount of commissioners and then you would have a Zoom meeting. You know, I I don't know that that's going to accomplish what you want, other than the fact that you guys are all together. For dialogue, you know, if you wanted to talk. And then you would just have the public do the comment the same way that they're doing, you know, they either. Log into a Zoom link and we do that at the at the travel station. I I want to confirm that with our I T folks that that's that's a possibility, I believe it is, but. That that may be another option that we could look at.
Or you said, Ron, that we potentially could have whoever's testifying on the monitors.
Yes, yes. So all your applicants, all those opposed or for could could have the Zoom link. But the planet commission would be in one location. I I need to see if that's a possibility, but that just thinking off the top of my head, that might be a possibility. Whatever your preference is, we'll look into it and see what how we can how we can make it better.
What it does sound like, though, is that this will be the, well, last month will be the last meeting where we're holding the the two meetings back to back. Is what it's starting to sound like, so. We can do a Zoom meeting where you you have interactions with the public. And correct me if I'm wrong, Trey, that if it's not requested to have the record open for an additional period of time, then that's not necessary to do that seven days extra. Is that correct?
No, I think we have to offer it, it can be waived.
Okay, so we would have to offer it to the public and then the public would have to waive it?
No, 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 the the seven and seven for the for the the first seven for public comment. The second seven for rebuttal by anybody. The last seven for the applicant can be waived.
But the public would have to request the record to remain open after the initial hearing. Correct?
I don't think so. They can, there anybody can request for after that. After the seven, 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 any party can request that the record remain open for an additional time. But I don't think it has to be granted. Actually, the first the first request, I think, does have to be granted.
Yeah, so so what I'm saying is if we have a Zoom meeting where we allow members of the public to speak. Live during that Zoom meeting. We're not doing any further continuation to leave the record open, but if they're able to speak live during that meeting.
Yes, you are correct.
Okay, then they then only if it's requested that we have to then grant the seven, seven, seven process. But we allow them to speak during the meeting. There they're provided their public comment at that time and then therefore you can still make a decision that same meeting. It's only if it becomes contentious or if the planning commission feels like there needs to be a greater opportunity for further comment. Then you would initiate the seven, seven, seven and we'd postpone the meeting until the next month.
Right.
So does that.
Would we run into any issues if somebody in the public said I wanted to comment, but I couldn't get to a computer or I didn't have internet or yada, yada, yada?
Yes, is a short answer is I that's one of my fears is that people. Would say, well, I wanted to submit this, but I couldn't get it emailed or I was muted and I wanted to talk. I mean, there's all that stuff. I mean, I think that as as clumsy as the system is, and I told Kelly today, I'd much prefer having comment during the during the hearings. But I I think that there's too much, too much opportunity for somebody to take advantage of that. And 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 basically say they they didn't, their opinion wasn't heard or somehow they were excluded from the process.
I'm not, I'm not an attorney, I just want to mention that it wouldn't that be the same if somebody said. I I couldn't drive to the meeting to the public hearing because I got a flat tire. I mean, I've never heard that excuse used or that being used as a reason, so. The amount of people that actually come to. The meetings, the city council meetings are a little bit larger audience, but the planning commission meetings aren't that large and I just. I I see what Trey's saying, hey, look, this is what could happen. But what's the likelihood of that happening and and I think that we should try the Zoom meeting and and, you know, one or two times and go from there to to. Just slow the process down, but to start.
I agree that I agree, it's rare, I I don't I don't anticipate that. And you're right, we attorneys look at what could happen.
I mean, if you're looking for the absolute one hundred percent safest route, it would be to continue with the. Not allowing for the public record to speak, but allowing for written comment and constantly re. You know, leaving it open for the seven, seven, seven proceedings, I think that's the safest route. But I I don't think that it would be a problem to do the the live public hearing process. The the city council has done that when we reviewed the annexations at the meeting last week. Where they just simply requested any member of the public who was interested in commenting to to contact us ahead of time and we'd provide them that opportunity. So we've set the precedence of doing that with the city council meeting. And other cities are trying to do these different hybrid options as well. I know that Sweet Home has done the the one meeting where there's the live comments as well and so it's not unheard of. The procedure that we've been doing previously was in the midst of a pandemic where we didn't have much of any. Experience in this, this was D L C D's recommendation of how to move forward with the meeting. I think that there's other less cumbersome ways that we can try to do it moving forward, though.
I kind of like the idea if we can make it work that the planning commission will be at the travel center and then we could put the testimony. The testifiers, I should say, on the monitor. To me, that would that would solve some of the issues.
We can work through that and troubleshoot it.
Jeremy, I see you're back in there, any comments?
I. I would. How many people are in the planning commission?
Seven.
So you potentially somebody from engineering, okay. So yeah, I mean, we can meet in less than a group of ten there with that. Let let us dig into that a little bit.
The group of ten. For social gap.
Yeah, as long as we maintain distance, right? That's that's the big thing.
Yeah.
It probably would be required to wear masks too, wouldn't we?
Yes, you would.
If you can't maintain six feet.
I'm in favor of any option that gets us. Face to face and. If we can interact with the public and and answer their concerns directly as opposed to over a. Week or two period where they've written a letter, now we're responding to the there, I just feel like the. The interaction is more valuable to help. Demonstrate where we are coming from or. To alleviate some of their concerns.
I agree.
That could be done over a Zoom meeting, but.
Well, we can do a hybrid, I know that this was an option that was presented to council as well, where if there's some. Planning commissioners who would prefer to stay on Zoom. We can keep that as an option. And for those that would prefer to meet in person, we can try to accommodate that through the travel station if possible.
So we'll turn it over to staff and see what they come up with. Anything else we need to talk about tonight? What do we have for next month, Kelly, besides the continuation?
You'll have the continuation, there's a couple of annexation applications and potentially. A comprehensive plan map amendments for a property for a reclassification of a zone. And then also a conditional use permanent application to reestablish a commercial use in a residential zone like you guys saw a couple of months ago, so. There's still quite a bit that we're that we're working through. So. Potentially five at this point.
Right, anything else? Seeing none, then we are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.